Good afternoon. I'd like to be able to call our workshop to order. One of the things I'd like to do here before we get going is today is 9/11, and it's one of those days that lives in our nation's history. And I'd like to take about a minute just to have a quiet time for sure and remember of our first response. Thank you. First order of business is our discussion and updates related to the hike and bike trail and disc golf.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is really just a brief update, and I wanted to make sure everybody's looped in. I know our mountain bike group out there at the 580 Sports Complex as well as the disc golf group have been working together for the past several months. We've got the map pulled up just so that it's on the screen. It's kind of hard to see against the distance. But to give you a little bit of background, what we did initially was both groups kind of came together after we had a few park forward meetings to make sure that, you know, we could try to fit both in here. So there's existing trails, and those are the yellow lines that you see up there. The green is the new proposed trails. The orange direct lines are that of the disc golf holes. There's about, there was actually nineteen that have been laid out. And, you know, I think the premise of this in the beginning was, you know, while we know there was going to be some conflict as far as how you throw your disc versus where the trails are, I think that was one of the things that we wanted to make clear. And when I walk this with the disc golf guys, you know, sight distance is a big deal. So when you're walking out there, making sure you can see good line of sight, how that trail comes up, you know, and if it does cross or there's some sort of conflict so you're not throwing into somebody coming up that can't see. And as, and as it's kind of progressed, you can see that there's been a significant addition to the trails in the green. And so, you know, some of the yellow will be abandoned. One thing that was clarified for me when I saw some of the conflicts where it looks like there might be more conflict than there was before with the disc golf was when they were GPSing this and collecting the trails, the accuracy level. And Shannon, who I've been working with, had even mentioned, you know, he's like, "Well, sometimes I, you know, I didn't turn it off. So if it looks like it goes back and forth, it's really, you know, not making that many crosses." But then I reached out to the, to the disc golf group too. I wanted to make sure, because they met on site, walked through some of these areas. And I think there's still some things, you know, that we're, we're going to have to work through as far as how those holes lay out. You know, they were good even in the beginning saying, "Hey, we'll, we'll work with where the trails are. We'll try to fit this in." So it's going to take some finesse, but, you know, I think the main goal and the feedback that I got from the disc golf group was they didn't want to hold up progress on the trails, let those get cleared so that they can truly see, you know, where some of those lines of sights and some of those open areas are. And so that was kind of the direction or at least ask that, that they've asked us. And some of the dates that I wanted to share, just so everybody's aware, they've, the mountain bike group has been working with S&amp;S contractors. And September sixteenth, there's a classroom school that, that the group will be going to that kind of teaches, you know, trail building and some of those things. On September twenty-third, they've got a work party planned where they begin rough cutting and cleaning some of those corridors. And then October second is actually when the contractors start. So that's kind of the timeframe they're looking at right now that I wanted to share. We're, we've actually got memorandum of understanding or agreement. They've sent over a few of those for us to review. We'll work on getting something in place hopefully by the next council that we can bring to you for that, just an agreement of who's, you know, who's maintaining it, what does this look like, you know, kind of what are the parameters around it? I think once the, you know, the trails are placed, you know, one of the things we talked about too was signage, making sure that everybody's aware of, you know, where these are trails for hike and bike and posting things as, as visitors come in, you know, because we, we have a lot of horses out there and making sure those trails are kind of kept for, you know, bikes and hikers. We have, as you can see on the map, the, the real kind of white gray predominant lines through the park. That's our, that's our work roads. And so, you know, horses are still allowed to go on those types, types of roads. There's no motorized vehicles allowed, but we'll work on signage and then, you know, trail signage as well. So stand for any, any questions or?
As far as the roads go, I know, me personally included, I've driven down some of these roads and parked in the back. Is that something that we're not going to allow? You know, I, I say in the back, you see where, I guess it's about hole seventeen? Somewhere around that area, or maybe it's up there by eighteen. There's a little parking area. Is that something that we're preventing in the future or?
Most likely just because of the motorized aspect of it, you know, that's already in place now.
Okay. And that's fine, I have no issue with it. I just personal curiosity on that one.
Yeah, I think it's just the inter being law and the safety, you know, when people are walking back with horses or whatever, just kind of backing those areas.
What do, do we currently have any regulations on the horses?
Would we, I'm sorry, Henry.
Do we have any current regulations on horses being out there or?
Other than, there, there are regulations where they're not supposed to be on the fields. But aside from that, not at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So are these going to be horse trails also, or are they automatically horse trails because of the rodeo stuff?
So the intent of the green lines will just be for the mountain bikes and hikers. So it'll just be a hike and a bike trail. And so the horses, you know, could use those gray and still use the predominant, you know, roads that we use. They're basically a road inside the park that we use to go check things. That's really was, was the intent, but horses could use those. I, I don't think you want to, you know, intermix pedestrians walking and, and mountain bikes with horses because that can become a pretty good conflict.
As a, the mountain bike group is planning on paying for all the signs or direction? And is that part of their deal or?
So the intent, or at least initially, that was the ask that they had at the city is can we help with signage? We do make our own signs out of our street department group. We keep those blanks and, you know, it may need to be more of a customized, smaller sign. Most of the time we'll order things like that, but, but that was the ask of them if, you know, if we could sign for trails and obviously our typical permanent signs that we'll have out there as well, just like we do on the softball field.
I had gotten an email that the mountain bike group was having a kickoff party at eight and people were invited to come out and see. And they were wanting us to come out and look if I, if that's correct, is that correct for us?
Yeah, I believe that was the twenty-third where they kicked off. Is that what you, okay. So anybody that wants to come out, feel free. Probably always use the help.
Absolutely.
What else?
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
Next up is a discussion regarding mentorship program between Lampassus Animal Shelter and Williamson County Regional Animal Shelter and funding through Best Friends Animal Society.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So Casey's done a lot of good things down at Animal Shelter, and part of that's attending additional trainings that she goes through. And because of that, she's been eligible for this grant. And I think sometime last year, she got an eighty-six thousand dollar grant. They're going to do three installments. And I think there was a bonus potential of nine thousand, depending on how this goes out. So they break this down into groups, and part of that was an additional structure that she was needing to, to house the overflow of cats that she's taken in. And she's referred to that as a cattery. So with that, talking about that, we were, Jody and I had discussed it earlier before this, this budget and maybe, you know, having to do something about the city fund and something like that to knew she was having this problem. And I was even looking at additional rooms inside the existing structure to put these cats. Well, with this grant, they were dedicating twenty-five thousand for a structure to help her with this. So I got some help with Ryan and Frank, and Frank got Sean Capatrick out and he drew up a site plan with the area that we had out off the Sallyport of the existing structure. And so with that, he come out, I, I went out for three quotes to get this building done. One of them didn't want to put in for it. He had too much work going on. And but I did get two more bids back. One of them was this Badger Storage and Building, and they, they come in at twenty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars, which is over the twenty-five thousand allotted. So Casey and I discussed it, and she reached out to the lady that's over the, the grant. And since Casey's done some good with cutting, you know, funds and stuff and getting good deals and things, she was able to get them to pay for the additional funds. So all this is getting paid by the grant. We're not paying any of that. But we're here today to try to see if the council will review it and maybe award a bid to Badger Stores to get that started for us. But I got her here today because I'd like her to touch on everything that she's done for us.
Hi. So I just want to talk about a couple of programs we've started since getting this grant because the numbers are really amazing, and I want to help out on them. With this grant, we started a foster program. So that's allowed us to save more cats because kittens were the hard part. We didn't have the availability to bottle feed them through the day and through the night, things like that. So this foster program has allowed us to help with that. We used the grant money to buy supplies for our fosters to take home so that our fosters aren't going to be out anything fostering for us. And we started our Doggy Day Out program where you can literally come check out a dog for an hour a day, a weekend, and take it out of the shelter for a walk or take it home and give them some time out. We did a collaboration between the library where we did Tales for Tales reading program where the kids came and read to the animals. Honestly, I think the adults had more fun with that than the kids did, but we did that all summer long, and we're looking at going ahead and extending that throughout the school year too. Where we've made the biggest impact with our animals is our barn cat program. Typically, we only have the three buildings inside the room, so we can only house about fifteen to twenty cats. We sometimes get that in a day. You know, so with the barn cat program, we are getting them spayed or neutered, and now we're giving them away for free to farms and ranches. We're relocating them back to where they were to begin with if the, if the people that were feeding them are happy with them being there. That way they're spayed or neutered, they're vaccinated, and they're not causing any more problems. So doing that alone, we probably, I think we spayed or neutered, last I checked, over a hundred cats. And so that's made a huge impact on our numbers, and I'll tell you in a minute. We've also done more community involvement and volunteer work. We lowered our volunteer age through y'all. We've also had an event every single month at the shelter for the entire year. Our next event is this Saturday, so the third Saturday of every month, you know, we're there for extended adoptions and doing something that our community has asked us to do, dog training, helping with spay neuter, getting them where they need to be to get that done. We've also worked really hard on promotions. We've created a logo for the animal shelter now, and we've got it on shirts so that staff and volunteers can get those out in the community. We're making flyers around town because that was one, and we've been here fourteen years, and I was really surprised at how many people come up to me and they had no idea we had an animal shelter. You know, so we're just really trying to market us all over town, so you'll see our flyers growing up soon. Along with the eighty-six thousand dollar grant, I've also gotten several other little grants from them for little things. They paid for me and Rachel to go to the national conference again this last August. And so those are always great because we make lots of connections and we get a, we get a lot of information that we wouldn't have had resources to, to get in the smaller, you know, community. So that's really helped a lot. We didn't use all of that grant money for that conference, so we ended up sending me to another class where I got certified as a peer support counselor for other animal control officers. So that is something I've been wanting to do for a long time because it's a really hard career. And so I'm one of nine in the United States. We just started a nonprofit for animal control out of Hutto, and so we're hoping that we can do a lot of good for other agencies and things like that through that. So that was something I was very fortunate to do because of Best Friends. We also had a hoarding situation about a month ago where we had thirty cats come in in one day after a lady passed away. I called Best Friends and they immediately went to tractor, or called down the tractor supply. They bought cages for us, the big dog, our big chicken enclosures. And so we got three of those, and so the cats immediately went into that. So where, that gave us that, that chance to be able to save those, you know, right off the bat. And we're looking at making that a temporary or a permanent solution if the state is okay with that. So we do have those now. And then we also had a two thousand dollar grant for this weekend, which is Best Friends' Adoption Weekend. So we are giving away microchips to the public because of that grant. So there's a limited number, so we're posting that that people, the first fifty that come out, maybe a few more, we'll see how it goes. We're also waiving all adoption fees, and we're giving out a fifty dollar gift certificate to every person that adopts to be able to use that at one of the local vet clinics for follow-up vaccinations and stuff. And that was all care of friends. So lastly, let me tell you our numbers because that's the most important part. We ended last year at a forty-seven percent live release rate. And that sounds really bad, I know, but it was cats. Cats drove us down. Our cat live release rate last year was twenty-four percent because of all the kittens and ferals and things like that that were coming in. I'm so happy to tell you that we, as of last month, we are at eighty-four percent. So we made that huge climb. Our cats are up to seventy-four percent now thanks to the new programs and the, no, the cat building just add that much more. So my, my staff stepped up and they just really exceeded, put a lot of hard work into it, and we have a lot more programs that we're hoping to come out. I don't know if anybody saw, we just did a poll online asking our community what they wanted from us, and we've gotten some really good feedback on that. So I might be coming to y'all with some other programs that we want to add in in the future.
Any questions for Casey? Casey, thank you very much for your hard work. That's impressive.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding any item on the regular agenda? If there's no discussion, we will adjourn the workshop session and we will call our regular session to order. Stand up.
Let us pray. Dear everybody, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight in this beautiful place in our community. We thank you for the ability to share this information freely. We ask that you be with our leaders, be with our community, be with our staff, help us to take care of business for all the community, which is your, your wish and your desire. We ask that you be with us on this nine eleven, as the mayor mentioned, and be with all those that couldn't be with us today and all their loved ones that remain. We ask that you watch yours and safety and be with us until we can meet again. And as always, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, honoring the test of the heart, honoring the righteousness of the test, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
This evening, we have a proclamation, Library Card Sign Up Month proclamation. Do you have anybody here for that? And I will read the proclamation. Whereas, this is important in our libraries, whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children. Whereas librarians are literacy experts offering everything from preschool, story hour, to summer reading clubs that sustain school year learning. Whereas libraries provide a learning environment that foster joyful exploration, encouraging students to research subjects that they are genuinely curious about. Whereas librarians create a welcoming and exclusive space for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another. Whereas librarians provide a variety of books and resources to serve everyone in the community, making knowledge and ideals available so that people have the freedom to choose what to read. Whereas Library Card empowers all people to pursue their dreams, explore new passions and interests, and find their voice. Whereas libraries are constantly transforming to deliver new service that connects closely with community needs during, even during a pandemic. Therefore, let it be resolved that I, Herb Pierce, Mayor of Lampassus, proclaim September as Library Card Sign Up Month in Lampassus, Texas. And I encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today. Level of hearing, citizens' comments. Citizens' comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda. And just a reminder, it's for three minutes. First one is Nathan Harbaugh. Harold, I'm sorry. I talked to you before.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Reisman and any Lampassus citizen to make you aware of our central appraisal district that has not been following the tax code for, ever since our chief appraiser's been there. So as a taxing entity for the appraisal district, I'm here before you as well. I've already been to our chief appraiser. She refuses to take my calls. I've been to their board meetings as well. The issue at large here is that anyone that has didn't, is not aware of their homestead exemptions, or maybe it's taken away for whatever reason, you're allowed to apply late under section eleven four thirty-one of the Texas Property Code. And when you do so, if your home's eligible, that allows your, your homestead to roll back for two years. And where our appraisal district's not following the law is, is they're also not, they're not applying the ten percent cap backwards for those two years. Now, I've called the comptroller's office. I've called every twenty-one counties, all the counties that touch us, all the counties that touch them, twenty-one in total. And I've asked the comptroller and all the counties, if I were to apply late for a homestead exemption, would that ten percent cap roll back for those two years? And every single one of those counties told me that it would. Yet we have a chief appraiser here that refuses to follow the tax code and roll those, those homestead exemptions back. And as everyone in this room is probably aware, in the last two years, the property values have skyrocketed. So that tax, that ten percent cap is very important. I've tried suggesting it to the chief appraiser, the city council, there's no action being, not the city council, I'm sorry, the board, there's no action being taken here. So I'm coming to this board as a taxing entity for that, for that district and hopes for some sort of relief to this. This is impacting every single citizen. We have one citizen right there, it's four thousand dollars that's owed. How many people have applied late over the past years that Susan Jones has been our chief appraiser? How many people have been applied late and maybe they're owed four thousand dollars? If it's just ten people, that's forty thousand dollars. If it's a hundred people, four hundred thousand dollars are owed to our taxpayers in this city. This is unacceptable, and that district over there wants to do nothing about this. So I'm coming to you today. I know this board, my understanding is you vote on those, those board members. We as citizens cannot do that, you can. So I'm hoping there's something that you can do to help out this situation. You know, legal help, or if we need to vote out board members over there, then so be it. But, but this is just, our citizens should not have to be putting up with this. We could live in any other county around us, and I wouldn't be here today, but the money would have already been refunded. So it's not, it's not right, so thank you.
Nathan, thank you for presenting that. Next up is Ms. Janet Cosen.
Good evening, Council. I'm here because I'm very perturbed that we have been for two years working on our ADA compliant garden bed that we have, we hope to have completed, and it was supposed to happen by August, which entailed a sidewalk going from the sculpture garden into our garden bed and connecting at, at the point of the fence. I called on it to see where we were in the process, and I was told that it wasn't going to happen, that it was not, that sidewalk was not a part of the budget for this year. I'm asking that it get on the budget for next year. We are missing out on our fall season because of it. We had, we bought all our, our beds ready to go with it. We have a promise of a donated shed along with a water collection system donated again, and, and also gutters to go with it. It, it takes some time to get this up and running as it is ADA compliant, it needs to be graded, which is all on us, the gardens. We are not asking the city to do anything for the gardens, we're asking the city to do what they promised, having that sidewalk directly into the garden, to the garden. That's all. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Next item up, citizens' comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. And there is none? One point three, public hearing to receive citizens' comments to consider a request for specific use permits to allow the sale of portable buildings in an area zone commercial described as a one acre abstract zero zero four two John Burleson survey, commonly known as six fifteen Central Texas Expressway, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Dennis Johnson, who is the business owner of the property, has applied for a specific use permit to allow for the sale of portable buildings. The property is owned commercial. The area surrounding the property is commercial, single-family residential six and single-family SF ten. All modifications and publications as required by ordinance and statute has been made. Staff mailed twenty-five notices to property owners within two hundred feet of the residence. We received no letters in favor or in protest. This case was heard before the planning commission on the seventh of September, and they do recommend approval of the specific use permit.
Any discussion? Thank you, Becky. Level of hearing to receive citizens' comment to consider request for specific use permit to allow for daycare and area zone retail described as approximately plus three acres, lots one and two, block fifty-eight, eight H of Barnes Edition, commonly known as eight oh eight South Western Avenue, Lampassus, Texas, Lampassus County.
Mayor and Council, again, this is a request for a specific use permit. The business owner, which is the Jacob and Tori Yoho, and the property owner is Mike Exton, who both applied for this permit. The property is owned retail. The area around it is retail. This is based on the comprehensive plan vision, is more of a corridor commercial and downtown transitional area, so best fit with the comprehensive plan vision. All notifications and publications as required by ordinance and statute have been made. We mailed out twenty-five notices to property owners. We received none in protest and one in favor. This was heard before the planning commission on September This was heard before the planning commission on September 7th, and they did recommend approval for the specific use permit for daycare.
Any questions or discussion? Move to 1.5, public hearing to receive citizens' comment to amend the Landpasses Code of Ordinance zoning regulations to consider single-family residential 10 SF10 zoning classification for hillside acres subdivision, 36.76 acres located in Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Mayor and Council, again, this signing was brought before the planning commission on September 7th, and this is consideration for the zoning distinction of single-family SF10. This is for the hillside acre subdivision out across from the Five Eight Sports Complex. And this is the 26-lot subdivision. They're about halfway through the process at this point. We got about 14 vacant lots left to develop. And again, like I said, the planning commission did recommend approval to go ahead and give it a SF10.
Any questions or discussion?
SF10 is 1,200 square feet minimum, correct? Do they have any kind of due restrictions for?
They do, their minimum on their evidence that they picked together was 1,600 square foot.
No other discussions, we'll move to 1.6. Public hearing to receive citizens' comment to amend the Landpasses Code of Ordinance zoning regulation to consider single-family residential 10 SF10 zoning classification for Hidden Oaks subdivision, four acres located in Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Mayor and Council, again, this is a subdivision of four acres, so that's part of the 12 lots. Statists recommending the zoning distinction as SF10 for Hidden Oaks. It was heard before the planning commission on September 7th, and they did recommend approval.
Any discussion? Go to 1.7, public hearing to receive citizens' comment regarding a request to rezone 12.74 acres of land out of James Easely survey, ABSB number 0185, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County, owned by Ronald Endeavor Cooper, from agricultural to multi-family to apartments.
Mayor and Council, this property was voluntarily annexed in to the city limits at the August 28th, in a council member, I'm sorry, city council meeting, and at the request of Minister Mrs. Cooper. And the property owner is asking for consideration of resetting the property from agriculture to multifamily to. The area is characterized as mixed use, the property is surrounded by Landpasses economic development, business park, and developed land and residential homes. All notifications and publications were mailed out as required. Six notices to property owners have been turned free to residents. We're sent out, we received none in protest and none in approval at this point. And this was heard before the planning commission on September 7th, they did recommend approval. And I did enclose in your packet just for a view of the multifamily apartments, and does provide a lot of latitude of what can be built there as far as residential. They do have the opportunity of the 12 acres to do the multifamily apartments. They can do duplexes, they can do single-family as well. And they can also move forward with even a plan development with the 12 acres if they choose to. So, it gave a little more flexibility of how to use the 12 acres based on the community and what was needed. And this is, like I say, with the comprehensive plan, it's more of a mixed area. And it is more of a suburban escape, so the larger lots and does have the employment use with the actual EDC park being right next to it, as well as suburban area as well.
Any discussion, comments, questions? Public hearing to receive citizens' comment relating to the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles in Article 2, Specific Street Regulations, Division 2, Stop Intersections, Section 78 to 62, same all-the-way stops of code ordinance by adding all-the-way stops to intersection of 4th Street and Spring Street.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. This particular item was discussed in workshop at the prior council meeting. Spring Street and 4th, there is a site distance or a limited site distance based on the manual uniform traffic control devices, 270 foot, when we measured it out, it was about 150 foot, and that's eastbound, westbound. So, if you pull up at the two existing stop signs, you, you look back to your west, if you're going north there, you have that limited site distance to see over the hill and, and make a good judgment. So, this particular item takes that into concern while there was other, there was other criteria in the MPTCD manual that defines, you know, crashes and average daily traffic volumes and some of those things. The one that it actually meets was really what the citizens that brought it to our attention, their concerns were, and that was near misses and not being able to, to see at that intersection. So, looking at an all-the-way stop condition for that, those two roadways.
Any discussion, questions? Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Go to 2.0, 2.1, discussion and possible action concerning approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on August 28, 2023.
I didn't see any corrections, you recommend approval?
Yes, I do. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda, discussion and possible action regarding the purchase and charges in excess of $4,000 from August 1st, 2023, August 31st, 2023. I move you up through the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 3.2, discussion and possible action regarding the July 2023 investment report.
That, that item wasn't specifically referenced when you asked for the approval of the consent agenda, so staff would recommend that you take this, take this up as a separate item.
Recommend approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Reviewing manager, city manager's operational report.
Evening, Mayor and Council, just a few brief comments on the memo that's included in your packet. First, Airport, as you may recall, we, we've talked to you for quite a while, and the, the last time we gave you an update on this, we were looking to have this contract approved sometime last spring. It's now September, but we have received notification that after protracted the contract negotiations between the contractor Park Hill and Tech dot that it has finally been approved, and they've been issued a notice to proceed. The next step is a kickoff meeting, and also what we'd like to do is gather a relatively small group of stakeholders to serve on the committee to review planning documents as well as forecasts. We had talked to you previously about the committee being made up of two members of the Airport Advisory Board, one member from the Pilots Association, one member from the Landpasses DDC, one member from council, and perhaps one member from the Chamber of Commerce. What we'd like to do, this is a warm-up, because we'll put this on the agenda again next meeting on the 25th, ask if one of you has an interest in being included. It's probably going to meet three, maybe four times over the next 12 months. And the other thing that we'll ask you to do is formally appoint, appoint the roster of stakeholders that will gather from those specific committees. Water still has hollow at the time of this publication, this memo is about 603.86. That was down from what we reported to you approximately two weeks before that, about 605. We're still in a very serious situation. We are hopeful that the cooler weather will lessen the amount of evaporation that comes off of the lake, as well as can get people to hold off using outdoor water quite as much. Although, I will say that our community has reacted very, very well. In some cases, like I previously reported, we're using a million gallons less on the same day a year ago. So, it's, it's been good. We do have still take time to monitor and notify high-water users by personal calls, door hangers. We even had Tony pay a visit on a few folks. To date, we have not issued any citations, there've been a couple of warnings, but people have generally responded very, very well to that. Couple of records that set this summer, I mean, there, there's a whole list of them, but the one that Phil Wilson from LCR A noted that I kind of took notice of as well is highest number of days over 100 and highest number of days over 105. We've had a lot of really hot days this year. EMS, you've got the report attached, your memo, just as note, the calls originating from the City of Landpasses, about 177 out of 363, or about 49%. The other thing that's also new in this report you'll see is the destination, which is kind of interesting, and also destination for transfers. Our dispatch, his, by all accounts, county EMS and even the chief Cummings has been doing very well. We are doing some advanced training for those dispatchers, and hopefully get them EMD certified. Hancock Pool, undoubtedly we have heard that the season did end a little earlier than we wanted to on Hancock. Typically, we try to keep that pool open through the month of September, at the very least on the weekends. However, we twisted the valve and the valve broke on the field. So, we'll have to make those repairs this fall in coordination with the Parks and Water Department. Developers meeting, we're still working on the plan format for a developers, builders, real estate professionals meeting targeting mid-October. This is something that we have done in the past, not on a real frequent basis, but we've found that they've been very valuable, not only to the city, but also the attendees. I think the big thing about it is we want this to be a dialogue. We want to hear from them in terms of ways that we can improve, as well as anything that we see on the horizon that we may need to deal with. Eclipse continuing to make progress on that and preparing marketing information. The Chamber has fine-tuned their ability to make reservation and accept fees on the city's behalf for city locations. And I believe the last I heard is, I think the, the kickback to the Chamber for that service was going to be somewhere on the order of 5% to 10%, which did not sound unreasonable to me, knowing the number of calls that they may have to field, et cetera. And I wanted to also let you know, in addition to our own local meetings, we, we do have staff that is, that's also sitting in on meetings from all over the region. I think that's been very valuable. That's all I have to report, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Photo entry. I know what it was. I was going to ask some mayor's comments and, so, I was forgetting my own, own thing. I apologize, I just, I, I wanted to take this a minute and, and just tell our staff from, from our police to our firemen to our office people, and I wanted to communicate with our citizens, and this is the first time I've ever worked in city government, but I, I am proud of this group. And I can tell you that they actually really, really care about this town and about what goes on. And I would also say that about the council here, just in even private conversations we have, this group cares about what's going on. Perfect, we're a long way from being perfect, we make mistakes, we overlook Janet, we overlook your garden. But I can guarantee you, one way or the other, we'll find a way to make stuff happen. And, and I just, I just want to reaffirm and that we're working hard, and everybody up here as a council is working hard for the citizens here in Landpasses to make Landpasses as good as it can possibly be. All that being said, we're going to go to the photo contest now.
Mayor and City Council, there were eight photo entries for the month of August.
Make a motion on each of two. I'm going to make a motion on number four. You have a motion on two and a motion on four. All right, it sounds like we're going to have a vote. Nobody second it? Okay, you need a second? No? Okay, how about four?
I'll second.
Second on four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Orders, wait.
Thank you.
7.2, discussion and possible action regarding award of bid to Ryan Bell's Badger Building and Storage to build a cattery at the Landpasses Animal Shelter in an amount not to exceed $28,699.
Mayor and Council, this time is a discussion in workshop. At this time, we're asking you to consider a motion to award the bid to Ryan Bell's Badger Buildings in the amount of $28,699. Project will be fully funded through the grant program through Best Friend Shelter Coalition.
I move to award the bid to Ryan Bell's Badger Buildings in the amount of $28,699. Project will be fully funded through the grant program on the Best Friend Shelter Coalition.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Assistant Chief Boswell, on this proposal from Badger Buildings and Storage, I noticed he didn't list plumbing that he included in his bid.
Yes, we personally discussed that.
There is a drain in the floor, in the plans that Joe submitted, there's a drain in the floor. Is that included in his bid or, you know?
I see what you're saying. So, I spoke to him personally, and he, he got the same site plan Joe got in your packet. And so, of course, in that site plan, when I sent the email, getting the information, he understood that was part of the quote.
I'm kind of curious, it looks like there may be some salt cutting to do as well the way that the site plan is showing that rain line come out of the building. I guess it's heading west out of the building, it connected to an existing drain.
Correct, you did understand that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.3, discussion and possible action concerning the first reading of an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the City of Landpasses for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2023, and ending on September 30th, 2024, appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budgets, including appropriations of money to pay interest, principal, sinking fund... including appropriations of money to pay interest, principal, sinking funds, requirements on all indebtedness, providing a servability clause, providing a repealer clause for the repeal of all ordinance and appropriations in conflict with the provision of this ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, mayor and council. You will have a copy of the budget at the dais at your seat this evening. This is the ordinance to officially adopt our budget for fiscal year 23, 24. And the motion does have to be by a recorded vote.
I make a motion to adopt the proposed budget for the 23, 24 fiscal year.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to do the recording vote. Roll call.
Please, sir.
Approved.
Ayes.
Approved.
Your peers.
Approved.
Hernandez.
Approved.
Hany.
Or.
Hill.
Approved. 7.4, discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of an ordinance to approve tax rate for the citizens of Landpasses, for the city of Landpasses upon all property subject to taxation within the city of Landpasses, Texas, for the 2023 tax year for the use and support of municipal government of the city of Landpasses for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, apportioning said levy amount, the various funds items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement and bonded debt of the city.
Thank you, mayor and council. Again, this is another ordinance to adopt, officially adopt our tax rate of .304888 for fiscal year 23, 24. And there is a specific language that needs to be done during the motion, and it's also a recorded vote.
I make a motion that the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of .304888, which is effectively a 4.92% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Williamson.
Approved.
Price.
Approved.
Pierce.
Approved.
Hernandez.
Approved.
Hany or Hill.
Approved. 7.5, discussion and possible action regarding ratifying property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget.
Mayor and council members, the local government code also requires that after you take the vote on the tax rate, that you also have to take a vote to ratify that vote. So it is also a recorded roll call vote.
Make a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget via record votes.
Second.
Roll call.
Williamson.
Approved.
Price.
Approved.
Pierce.
Approved.
Hernandez.
Approved.
Hany or Hill.
Approved.
Thank you, mayor and council, appreciate all your help on the budget and tax rate issue.
Thank you. 7.6, discussion and possible action to approve the first reading of an ordinance to consider a request for specific use permit to allow to sell affordable buildings in an area zone commercial described as one acre, abstract 0042, John Burleson survey, commonly known as 615 Central Texas Expressway, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing. At this time, we're asking to consider a motion for the first reading of the ordinance to approve this specific use permit to allow for the sale of portable buildings.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance of a specific use permit to allow the sale of portable buildings in an area zone commercial described as one acre, abstract 0042, John Burleson survey, commonly known as 615 Central Texas Expressway, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County. Second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.7, discussion and possible action to consider the approval, denial, or approval with modification to consider a request for specific use permit to allow for daycare and area zone retail described as approximately plus minus three acres, Lot 1 and 2, Lot 58, H8H Barnes Edition, commonly known as 808 South Western Avenue, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing. And at this time, we're asking for consideration of approval of the specific use permit to allow for a daycare.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance for specific use permit to allow for daycare in area zone retail described as approximately plus or minus three acres, Lot 1 and 2, Lot 58, H8H Barnes Edition, commonly known as 808 South Western Avenue, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 7.8, discussion and possible action to consider approval or denial or approval with modification to amend Landpasses Code of Ordinance zoning regulations to consider single-family residential 10 SF10 zoning classification for hillside acres subdivision 36.76 acres located in Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing. And at this time, we're asking to consider a motion for the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Landpasses Code of Ordinance zoning regulations to provide a zoning decision of SF10 for this, for hillside acres.
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Landpasses Code of Ordinance's zoning regulations to consider single-family residential 10 SF10 zoning classification for hillside acres subdivision 36.76 acres located in Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.9, discussion and possible action to consider approval or denial, approval with modifications to amend Landpasses Code of Ordinance zoning regulations to consider single-family residential 10 SF10 zoning classification for Hidden Oaks subdivision 4.0 acres located in Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing. And at this time, we're asking consideration of a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the Landpasses Code of Ordinance zoning regulations to consider single-family SF10 zoning for the Hidden Oaks subdivision.
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Landpasses Code of Ordinance's zoning regulations to consider single-family residential 10 SF10 zoning classification for Hidden Oaks subdivision 4 acres located in Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.10, discussion and possible action to consider approval or denial or approval with modification to rezone 12.74 acres of land out of the James Easley survey, ABST number 0185, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County, owned by Ronald and Deborah Coker, from agricultural to multifamily 2 apartments.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing. And at this time, we're asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to rezone the 12.74 acres of land out of the James Easley survey, abstract number 0185, Landpasses, Texas. From agriculture to multifamily 2.
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to rezone 12.74 acres of land out of the James Easley survey, abstract number 0185, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County, owned by Ronald and Deborah Coker, from agriculture to multifamily 2 apartments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.11, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the first reading of an ordinance to improve intersection at Fourth and Spring Street to amend the city Landpasses Code of Ordinance, Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 2, Specific Street Regulations, Division 2, Stop Intersection, Section 78.61, by adding this intersection as an additional all the way stop in Landpasses, Texas.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is an item we discussed previously, it's for an all the way stop, Spring Street, Fourth Street. And it's the first reading for possible approval on the ordinance, Chapter 78.
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 2, Specific Street Regulations, Division 2, Stop Intersections, Section 78-62, same all the way stops of the code ordinance by adding always stop to the intersection of Fourth Street and Spring Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Lee. And last but not least, 7.12, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of applicants to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, mayor and council. And you may recall that I previously lost my chair, elected person back to my planning and zoning commission. So since that time, we haven't refilled her spot. So at this time, we're asking to consider approval of appointment for Zach Carley to the planning commission. This did go before my planning commission, was November 7, and they are in favor of his appointment.
I make a motion to appoint Zach Carley to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time? Make a motion to adjourn. We had a second. Down here, we had a second, and it was approved.